20th, 2018, please stand for the Fudge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, you kind of left us hanging last night.
Yeah.
Stops, we're all ready to go.
Okay. Do we have any minutes for reports received and filed?
No.
No? What you been doing? Give you a day off and... Announcements of other upcoming meetings and events? Commissioner comments? Commissioner?
We've got a small community cooperative project meeting tonight out at Public Works for...
I'll set the fire station on Monticello.
Okay. Coal County Fire Protection District training and building, okay, I see that now. We've got MAC Board meeting tomorrow. Central Missouri Port feasibility study update meeting tomorrow. Campo tomorrow. Home show this weekend, and we'll just go up to the mall, dilly-dally around. That's about it till Tuesday.
I had a CAP Region credentials meeting this morning at 7:00. I've got a CAP Region Board meeting tonight. Meet with Lieutenant Governor Parson tomorrow. Friday night, we've got the Coal County Central Committee. Friday night, there's a fish fry in St. Thomas. I told Lynn we would show this. She'll be serving fish, so she'll give you extra fish. I'm not sure what she's... Okay. And that's all I've got. Commission comments? No. Bids and contracts? Bid awards 2018-01, road materials?
I know. Been out of bid for road materials, got three bids, responses back. Year after year, it's the same, the recommendations for lowest and best near the work site with available material.
Just trying to pull it up here.
Bishop, we had not been since here.
Paper copies if it's not going well for you. I only have two, sorry.
Was it attached to the...
Yeah, it is.
It is, I can't get it to come up. There, I got it. You want to see this?
Actually, I'll give this back to you. Here, Jeffrey.
I get, we got one of them.
First thing, Tony?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's start, come up now. Computers just being a little slow.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I got it. Is this all of them?
Yeah. Did you let your girls go and do last night? What did you let your girls go and do last night?
Oh, the girls, basketball. I'm like, what, what did my daughter do next? She can't drive yet. Yeah, I know.
We getting big changes in this?
No.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
So that's road materials?
Yeah. I mean, we award to the lowest and best near the work site with available materials.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2018-02 blades.
Same deal, we got four bids in response to this. The recommendation is to award the lowest and best in each category with available material.
Any big changes in that one?
No.
Not really, no. Okay.
Just for snow blades or... Cliff, is this for snow blades or grater blades, snow blades?
Grater blades, wrecker snow blades, carbonite tip blades. Yeah, two stand, there are two different kinds of snow, grater blade one called the newer caterpillars have a different punch, both sides of their blades. But same thing we bid last year.
Usually order these all at one time, or are these that come up when they break in the middle of a snowstorm, or?
We usually order, keep a certain amount in quantity on hand, we don't order a bunch of them all at one time.
Okay. I just, I noticed that the cheaper ones just take four weeks to get.
Yeah.
So, I didn't know how that usually worked.
We usually call them and see how they, what they've got, and how soon they can get them to us. Kind of the same way, about, some of them are... You call them and then ask them, and then next thing you know, they want to try to add shipping on it. Well, we don't allow that as part of our bid, so... You kind of have to watch that when you order from them.
We usually keep extras on hand, right?
Yeah, we try to keep enough on hand for at least a month or two at a time, so...
So we should be using the low bidder as long as we're...
Mm-hmm.
As long as we're doing what we're supposed to be doing to keep the extras on.
Right, I like to bid on here a lot of times, sometimes these guys, if you call them, tell them, "I want 25 of this kind of blade," they'll tell you, "Oh, they're going to add shipping on it." It's like, no, well, if you're not...
You add shipping from Pennsylvania, Ohio, or Colorado, that can add quite a bit.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly, so you have to watch them for that.
So, how's the bid go then there? Are they adding shipping, or does that include shipping?
That price is supposed to include shipping, but sometimes when you call them and you tell them, "Hey, I want this," then the next thing you know, they want to add shipping on, so...
Tell them, "Go pound sand." I'm just asking what our price is.
That's why we do, then we move on to the next one, so... Yep.
If they're not going to honor the bid, then why even?
So, wait a minute, so you just, you said something, so you said if they want to add shipping, then we go on to the next one, well, then, then why are we even allowing them to bid?
Exactly.
I mean, if you, if you call XYZ and say, "I need two blades," and this was your bid price, and they said, "Well, you're going to have to pay shipping," well, let's throw them out. Let's throw them out right now. I mean, if you had that problem last year with one company, they're not, they shouldn't even be allowed to bid.
I can, I can check back through and see if they had, I know.
I mean, it kind of defeats the whole purpose of bidding something if we say there's no shipping.
Yeah.
And, and then they want to add shipping, I mean...
Yeah, they're...
Because if, if all three of them do that, "I need two blades," well, it's going to be $150 in shipping. Well, what's the point?
They're probably going to buy that.
I mean, so...
Well, they bid it with free shipping, right?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Did they sign something?
Regarding to our bid, it's, everything we bid is shipped to us, and that, that is part of their bid, is actually supposed to be shipping, yeah.
Is there quantities that are required, or?
We say in there no minimum quantities, they are able to take an exception. I noticed Ware Parson Equipment took an exception, which I noted at the bottom. Other than that, it should be technically as is on the spreadsheet, so...
Do we order 60 blades at a time?
Some of them we do, yes.
Some of them, I'd say, yeah, not all of them, but some of them we probably do. Once we have, where we use a lot of them.
Well, it says in any combination, so if we're ordering 60 at a time, I'm fine, but if we don't specify that, then I'm going to knock theirs out of the, off the bid completely then.
And they got a good price.
Yeah.
So as long as we're ordering enough and meeting their minimums, don't really have a problem with it.
Because if, like, these other two or three, you know, if we say, "Well, we're ordering 60 at a time," they might drop the price down too then. So it's not, I don't know if it's apples to apples is where I'm going here, Cliff. And we got a long agenda today, so we figured we'd start in on you early.
I'm easy to... I just, generally, whatever we do, we call them and ask them. When we order something, and if they tell us that they're going to do that, and then we pretty much just don't even buy anything from them anymore for a year, so... We usually don't find that out until we support or something from them.
Did the other ones have the opportunity to bid it with a minimum of, minimum order requirement of 60?
It says, it says no minimum, and it says shipping should be included. It's also a way for them to take an exception, which they chose to do. So I guess technically anyone can take an exception. But, I mean, that wasn't really something we asked for as part of the bid, that was just them taking an exception to what we specified.
I mean, obviously, we buy parts from Fabik all the time. And we can spend up to so much money with them in six months' period. So if you need something right away and we don't have it, you can go over there and pick it up, right?
Yes.
This just kind of locks in the price. Is that kind of correct?
Yeah, if we got in a pinch in a big snowstorm, we ate it all, used every blade up that we had, and we needed some in three days, maybe we could have some. So that's kind of the way we order. That's kind of the way we award it the way we do. A long time ago, we used to order, we used to set up a minimum on these things, we used to tell them, "We're going to, we're going to order a semi-load blade at one time, well, that one year you might use a semi-load, and the next year you may not." And then you have a lot of blades sitting on inventory that we didn't need to spend all that year's budget, so... That's kind of why we went to bidding and awarding this the way we do.
I just want to make sure that we're trying to use the lowest. I mean, I don't care if we can order the minimum, fine, otherwise we go to the next lowest. And it looks like, you know, the lead times are a little long, so... You know, I don't have a problem with going to CAD if we're in a pinch or something and getting something, but just don't want us to be calling all these guys and saying, "Well, you're going to add shipping, so now we're going to the next." And that doesn't, I mean, we might as well not even bid it if we're under that.
What we're trying to do, if we can order, you know, make a load out of a corner where you got 60 minimum, that's what we're trying to do. It just, you know, some of them, if we guess wrong, that we're not going to use more grater blade or something, then we have to go back and get a few extras to make the drops, but we're trying to use the lowest as long as I'm...
So only bid it two ways, then have, where they all bid at minimum order, and then have them bid it where it's a single unit. Or, I guess all of them can bid it with the exception, so that maybe it would behoove them to do it that way. Ware Parts obviously isn't going to honor that price if we just order one blade, and they don't have to because they put the minimum order on there. But we're not really comparing apples to apples then. If we're having a 60 order minimum and the bid said no minimum, I don't want to have to rebid it. So, I mean, for this year, we can, I'm fine with doing the same. But I think something, it might be something we'll look at next year, is to give them...
We just have to be careful we don't get blades, you know, for whatever reason they switch where we don't use them. And that's kind of where we got into a little bit when they had, we always ordered a truckload of them every time. We ended up having surplus in blades that we didn't use, couldn't use.
But I thought you said we do order 60 at a time, so...
Well, that's what I mean, truckload, I'm saying, it's more than that, when we used to take semi-load down.
No, I'm not worried about that part of it. We're going to, if we order 60 at a time, then bid it that way one time, and then have the individual, because if we go through some for whatever reason... Like I said, I'm fine with going with the same this year, and we can look at doing it different next year if we want to. I don't want to pick on Jen too and make it harder on her.
Sure.
Uh, she's expecting that.
She's taking about eight weeks off here in a little while, so... You can, it'll give you time to think about it.
I move that we award grater and snow blades to lowest and best bid in each category with available material.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Where are we on? 2018-3 mosquito spray materials.
Received four responses, again, the recommendation is to lowest and best each category with available material.
Computer's running slow today.
Yeah, mine was too. I feel a brawn later.
Feel a brawn later.
You want to look at this one, or did you?
I got it, yeah.
It's just going slow. I know, I'm over my line, sorry. That's why we don't need these papers. I'll put this right, and tell them, "There's our line." I'm fine with it.
So there's a lot of products in here, is, I mean, very few of them are bidding what we expect? Is that what I'm seeing here?
They're at the same spec and are similar. We haven't bought any of, the only thing we've bought in the last two years is the Altisid XR briquettes.
Okay.
The rest of this stuff, since we don't do any of the skills misting or spraying anymore, and have it for the last couple of years, we haven't bought any of this. We put out a bid just in case we got an emergency through the year that we had to buy some, so...
I thought we were still spraying?
No.
No, we haven't done that for two years now.
We haven't, we haven't done any spraying, so it has to, according to the policy that you all agree to, there has to be confirmed cases of...
That's not?
That's not, yeah.
Okay. So all you're buying is the Altisid briquettes?
Pretty much, standing poles, you know, or drop inlets.
Looks like everybody's the same price.
It's, they are, everybody's the same price, it's all preset by the company that makes them.
If that's the case, I'm going to, I'm going to buy Missouri, and I'm going to award to Univar USA out of Bridgeton.
For the briquettes, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
But then what if you want to buy something else?
I'm going to second it for more discussion, so I just want to make sure that's just the Altisid, and then we can say the other ones, we can go with lowest and best available.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Is that what you were going with, Jen?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you were to go to the end, there's several that I didn't bid, if they would have, then you do, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, yeah, we're just talking about the briquettes going with Missouri.
That's most of what we're buying, so...
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we're talking about, just awarding Altisid XR briquettes to Univar USA out of Bridgeton.
Right.
Good with that?
You got more discussion?
No, I was just clarifying.
Okay.
We vote on that, and then we'll vote on...
You seconded?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, and then I'll, I'll move that we award to the lowest and best in each category with available material for other mosquito spray materials.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bit tab 2018-04 vegetation spray materials.
We got two in response to this, again, the recommendation is to the lowest and best each category with available material.
I'm good.
So am I, yeah.
I move that we award vegetation spray materials to the lowest and best in each category with available material.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bit tab 2018-05 leased equipment.
Received two bids for leased equipment this year, and the recommendation is lowest and best each category with available equipment.
So obviously, some of these with no bid, I mean, you'll have to just call around and get bids on those materials, or those things if you need them?
Yes.
Michelle, is this your copy? I got the computer up, thank you though.
Is there a reason our local guys aren't bidding this stuff, or what?
Not a clue.
They knew about it.
We got Sunbelt, we got Forklift, we got Fabik... Crown.
Sunbelt, I even talked to a guy, Sunbelt, called me, talked to him, but they gave me five of them.
Reached out to US Rents at 42, they've never bid, I don't know.
How does, uh... Do we go get this stuff? Is there a delivery charge, or what?
Few of them got delivery charges on, but usually this is there. Like, if you look at that, uh... Oh, let's see, which one is the, the rubber tire loader one there, if you look at it, 100% is about worst one, it's got a monthly, a weekly, and a monthly on it, and it's got a $200 delivery charge, or we go pick it up.
Where are you seeing that at?
They will deliver to us for 200, or we can go to Columbia and pick it up, or we don't pay a delivery line.
Oh, I see, okay. What do you really need off this? There's, there's not that much on here.
We use a rubber tire loader, we have used a skid steer a few times, the excavator we used to rent, since we purchased one of our own now. If we need one, that we'd have to have it purchased, a bid on one, that we'd have to have two of them, then we have that. Compressor, but it doesn't look like either one of them gave us a bid on that. Oh, yeah, they did down here at 185, you know, I rentals it. We rent a compressor sometimes for doing crack seal work. But that's usually only a couple of weeks at a time.
I guess here's where I'm going with this, is that, I mean, if you go get it, or if they deliver it, I mean, obviously, the big rubber tire loader, I'm okay with a delivery fee, I mean, everybody's going to have that, even if...
Yeah, right.
But, I mean, if we're getting a skid steer, I would hope that we'd call around here and find one, because...
We usually do, actually, just we'll pick these all up ourselves, no matter which one.
Well, I, I mean, if we're going to Columbia to pick up a skid steer, it's probably costing us every bit of $125 to go get it and come back. So, why would we do that? I mean, we're spending, probably, that's a three-hour round trip to go get it. And surely, our time is worth more than that. So, I mean, I don't know, I mean, there's just not that much on here that I can see you guys using, and then if there is a skid steer on here, there's only one. I mean, there's only one bid. And I don't, I mean, I don't know, I haven't rented that much stuff here lately, but I don't know what that price is.
Skid steer, we've got several of them, all of them.
Right.
The only time we've rented those was when we hit that big ice storm. And that's, a lot of these prices are there for that.
Right, but when the ice storm hits, Larry, they're all going to be gone.
And that's, like we did, though, we were out in front, though.
Right.
Getting most of the equipment we needed.
Well, if you're out in front, though, you can probably get it here versus get it out of Columbia.
We can, but again, you know, it's a price, you know, you have to look at the price before we got bid, and what price will we get it for here? And we still run into that, if we keep it for a long time, we run into that $4,500. They're not for them, we have to get some equipment for a while.
I guess my thing is, is that obviously, there's a lot of them here where there's no second bid, so when you call, say Bobcat at Columbia, and you say, "I need a 90 horsepower excavator," and they say, "We don't have any," what are you going to do? You're going to start calling around and finding one, right? So...
It just gives us a, if they've got them, Chris, if we don't bump up against that, that's $4,500 or $6,000 thing, we've got to bid there. And that's, you know, we look at that when we're doing this, you know, we've got a pretty good idea of how long we're going to need the equipment. You know, the last time we had two excavators rented, we were doing bank stabilization on the Royal River, where we had one set down in the river, and the other one was handed down to it. Most of the time, we know where we're going to be at with it, and how long we need it, you know, just, if we rent from somebody, you know, that we've got bids from, we don't have to worry about bidding requirements, whereas if we do call around, say it's fading, you know, and then we're looking at how much we purchased there, you know, granted, most of ours are equipment, it just cleans it up on our part.
Keeps us from having, I mean, otherwise, we'd have to come up here, you guys would have to go in session and do an emergency, an emergency for us to actually use this equipment without, if we've had it already on a rental agreement with somebody, if we need it, we can go pick it out without having to go do all that. I would like to see more of them bid, but I'm not sure why they do it this time.
Usually they get five?
Yeah, usually we have four, five bids, I don't understand why, but...
Thoughts?
I'm fine with this kind of an emergency thing. Is your biggest hangup because they, we don't have bids from locals?
Well, yeah, I mean, call them up and write it down and turn them in for them. I mean, basically, I mean, hey, Forklift, Fabik, what's your, what's your rental rate on a 70 horsepower skid steer? All right, will we hold that for a year? Yep, turn it in. I mean, I can't believe that they're not bidding this stuff, it's ridiculous.
I mean, why aren't they? Is it not worth their time to sit down and do it, or what?
I don't know. I mean, here it is, here's the bid, you know, we can give this to all of them, here's what your competitors bid, bid the same.
You know, I want to do local, but, you know, if you want to give them a bone, they got to at least come to the feet trough, so...
Yeah.
If they're not going to try to help themselves, then it's not much I can do for them.
Oh, I get it.
You know, they say that you can't help those that don't help themselves, but that's proven wrong every time I get my check each month. Same thing here, they got to, they're going to have to help themselves. I don't know if we can reach out to them, I don't know them guys that good out there. They bid the blades, so...
It's fine. All right, I move that we award leased equipment to the lowest and best bid in each category with available equipment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
2018-15 exercise equipment.
Are you guys able to pull up your attachments yet? I have two of these, if you can.
What are you doing, Sam?
Exercising.
Is that because you're talking?
Yeah.
It's working, it's just slow.
So the reason we put this out for bid is the Sheriff's Department was wanting to buy a piece of used equipment that was over the limit. We put it out for bid, it disappeared before the used equipment, before we opened these. So actually, what happened, they found a comparable piece of equipment used that is less than these bids. The equipment itself, 7,418, was shipping total, 8,33380. So, what we'd like to see happen is reject all bids, and then approve purchase of this used piece of equipment. And since we did bid it, we fulfilled our bidding obligations, and we should be fine to do so, if you're fine.
So, we've found comparable stuff used to all this?
The top one, just the top one, right?
It's actually new.
Oh, it is new?
Yeah, it is new.
Okay.
And so, where's the 7,000, I don't see that.
I have a attachment on it yesterday.
Oh, so you're hiding it?
Okay.
Just messing with you?
Yeah. Wheeler said he was paying for it personally, too.
$915 freight.
You got it in your budget, don't you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we had capital, didn't we, or did we approve that under your capital?
So, what it was, is we had this other piece of used equipment, put the bid out, and then about a week before the, the, two days?
Two days prior.
They sold it out to hundreds, so during the process of bid, he found this new piece of equipment, so it's actually, it's actually gonna work out better.
Okay, as long as it's on the up and up, I'm, I'm fine with it. It seems weird that it's not part of the bid and accepted, but Jen says it's okay.
I said we fulfilled our bidding requirements, and we did, so we're good.
I move that we award the exercise equipment to Legend Fitness.
So, we're actually gonna reject the bids, and then accept that quote, which is outside of the bid from Legend Equipment.
Okay, draw on. I move that we reject all bids for exercise equipment.
Hold on a second, it, it's still confusing.
So, you got this bid...
Somebody can come in after the fact, after bids are open and go, well, 11-5 was the lowest bid, here, we got something else, we can come in and put a bid in, and then just reject them, and figure out a way around system here. That just, that seems weird to me.
We run into this if you would use the equipment. It's hard to go out to bid on a piece of used equipment, because of availability.
Right.
When you actually go to bid.
Sure.
Okay, will you second it?
Yeah, but I still don't have an easy feeling about this. Am I the only one?
No, I get what you're saying, I mean, so this came in after bids were closed, I assume, right?
Right.
Well, did they send the bid, or did you find it?
They put a bid for the original.
Okay.
This is the same company that put a bid in for a piece of equipment, and this is a same piece of equipment, just not as many accessories. All the bids came up pretty high, so...
Yeah. Yeah, the next closest one was about 14, so... Can we table it?
Well, yeah, so I guess I'm a little more confused now, too, so, so we bid a Legend eight-stack multi-station or equivalent, and Legend Fitness bid it, and they were at 12,578. Now, they've come up with something else that's with less, it's a lesser piece of equipment.
It's a five-stack rather than an eight-stack.
Okay, so that's a totally different animal.
It's the same, it's the same.
Well, then why would they call it a five-stack versus an eight-stack?
Well, but it says they're comparable, so I, I think that if I, and you gotta remember, we're rejecting all of them, and then when we reject them, that's when we found this other bid for the, uh...
The five-stack.
Yeah, so, we can't touch the, if, if you want us to go after the eight-stack, I'm okay with that, one needs more money.
It's not that I want you to go after the eight-stack, I want you to go after this five-stack that's cheaper, but these other people ought to have the opportunity to bill, bid a five-stack, I guess I would say. I don't know.
Okay.
Or not.
If, that's what you all want us to do?
There was two companies that bid the Legend Fitness, and both of them sent back prices for the five-stack. The other one was a thousand, fifteen bucks under.
So, this is a one, one piece, and if we, we can lose this one again, too, right?
I just don't know if we bid out the five-stack, if what the prices will come back at.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that's right, I didn't, I didn't realize they had bid. This came in after the bid, this goes to the trash, really? I mean, this is after the bid was tabled, just like any other bid, I mean, like a public works bid, if it comes in after the time.
Did that come in after the bid, or did it come in?
No, it was after.
It depends on if you're considering it as affordable, I guess is what it boils down to. And if not, then I guess we should rebid, if so, then we're fine to purchase it.
But it came in after the bid.
Correct.
So, we're gonna motion on the floor to reject all bids. Let's, we'll have more discussion.
So, are these bids over your budget, then, sure?
It'll be really close to get some of the stuff that we want, and, and again, I'm not opposed. If you guys wanna reject the bids and us rebid this out, it's just gonna be another, it's just gonna be another 60 days before we can make anything happen, that, you know, we've been trying to get this done since last year.
Right.
I'd be more comfortable doing that, I'd, I don't think this is the way to do it, if you're gonna bid stuff, and they've seen what the prices were, and they come up with something totally different, then you can throw that in there? I just don't know.
Yeah, I think we either have to award to one of these companies that bid, or we reject and rebid.
So, at this point, what if they source a used eight-stack? For less? Not saying they can, but let's just say...
I'd say give us the best price on a five or eight-stack that you can give us. What if they find a three-stack? I don't know what difference is between three-stacks, I don't exercise that much, one-stack would be good enough for me.
Scooter? Okay, scooter up and down the stairs.
16 ounces at that time, big soda.
Which company had the piece of equipment we were after originally and sold it?
Certified. Weighted equipment.
So, one of the bids would be obsolete to begin with, because that piece of equipment is no longer available.
The second one, I get my copy of it.
Right, the certified, 8,500. This is where the bidding requirements really hinder us, 'cause, I mean, obviously, if you find a deal that's gently used, and you wanna purchase it, and it's well below new, I think you should be able to purchase it now that you even have these prices, but...
Well, that's what I was asking you, if they are able to find one that's used at this point, how should we think about proceeding with that? And we'll come back up.
We can look at it, I mean... We have a motion to reject all these. We have a second.
Well, so Jennifer, could you go back to all of the bidders at this point, and tell them you want the best price on their five-stack, and have them submit them to you?
So, we don't have to go through another 60 days?
Right, well, I'm fine with doing that, I'd be asking you if you were fine with me doing that, so if you are...
Well, so I guess the question here is, is that one of the pieces of equipment is no longer available, were they below?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were. I've got two bids from different companies, a bid for the eight-stack and a five-stack, exactly the same.
I mean, my fear is we're gonna be back in the same place, if you take another 60 days, and you're asking them to bid a used five-stack, the same, the same outcome could happen, is that the piece is no longer available by the time we open the bids.
So, just advertise for exercise equipment, newer used. Bid whatever you want.
Well, that's what we did this time.
But everybody bid an eight-stack.
Yeah.
Because we, somehow, we said we wanted an eight-stack or something. But if we would've left it open, they could've bid whatever they want, and then we could've said, "This is what we want, this is a recommendation, buy." Right?
What's the likelihood of sourcing a used eight-stack, I mean, the first one, the one that I...
I found one back in July, which was a five-stack, which was 5,500, which was above the 4,500, it sold, and then the eight-stack came across, and put it out for bid, and it sold, before the bid process was up, so... They don't last very long.
But what we're talking about here is the top row, right?
Yes.
I think the terminology was eight-stack or comparable, correct?
What was the price on that one?
Takes that into consideration.
Seven...
7,300, plus shipping.
15 shipping.
So, the actual, that is actual... What was the next closest bid to this, then?
Other one they...
I don't, I gave you guys...
The one they, the one that they sold, the next closest would be...
Certified Fitness sold, and you got a Pro Maxima.
9,515.
9,515.
Okay, so 9,515 is what we could award today.
Right.
Or we can reject them and go after this 833380.
Mm-hmm.
Is the 9,515 one, one that's acceptable to you?
No, some of these will have a different, they have different, uh...
Okay, so it's an eight-stack, but it's a different...
Right, it doesn't have the features we're looking for, it's more noticeable.
So, we're looking at 12,5 or 12,578. Tough Stuff Fitness would be 12,5, Legend Fitness would be 12,578. Assume both of those would be okay, or...
The, uh, which one are you talking about?
Tough Stuff Fitness, the Tough Stuff PPMS 9,000.
No, that didn't have the equipment we're looking for.
Okay, so what about the Legend eight-stack jungle?
The Legend eight-stack is not both the Life Fitness, but we're looking at it.
So, this one here's that you found is more comparable to the Life Fitness one, and it's twice as much.
Which one's that?
The Legend Fitness one here that you...
Twice as much as...
That we wanna do.
No, it's the five-stack is at $8,333.
Right, but the lowest one that's gonna be comparable and has the stuff that they want would be from the advanced...
No, Legend Fitness.
At 12,5?
Mm-hmm.
12,578.
Okay, so what's the 919118, the alternate, the Legend eight-stack? It just doesn't have some of the bells and whistles that the...
Yeah, that's the older model, doesn't have adjustable pulleys on them.
Okay, so we can go 12,57880 today to get what you all want. Or we can save 4,000, rebid it, and then this might be gone.
Well, that's a new one. Is this one a new one?
It's a new one, yeah.
It's a new one.
We're gonna have a rough day today.
I thought this was gonna be quick. I thought we're just gonna breeze through that.
And what's your recommendation, Sammy?
My recommendation would be to go with this, but since we've got a motion on the floor to table, you can second it.
No, we never do motion to table.
We have a motion to reject the bids.
I thought you were gonna reject, and...
Losing him already.
Tomato, tomato.
Do you feel that uncomfortable, I don't want to reject the bids, I want to rebid it? I'm gonna give it that.
If you don't think that the five-step and the eight-step are comparable, I think reject it.
That's the question, yeah.
I mean, just in the name, I don't even see the equipment, but I mean, there's gotta be some significant differences.
So, what is the difference?
The difference is, uh, the eight-stack has two lads, two rows, and two tricep push downs. The five-stack will have one row, one lat, and one tricep.
So, I mean, that's...
It's the same, that's the same.
Right, but I mean, you got more stacks, you got more people that could work out at one time.
Sure, so, and that's why, and that's what I'm saying, if you guys feel that that's not comparable, then we'll just reject all bids, and we'll rebid it.
How much was the eight-stack that y'all had, that they sold?
8,500.
The one that's on there, the second?
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't following this, no, I got you. And it was the pre-owned one, so... I'd say reject them and rebid, I just, I hate that it takes another 60 days to get this done, but... If we're gonna, if we're gonna accept this one, then I don't see why we bid anything, wouldn't make sense. All right, let's open the bids, and let everybody see the bids, and then they submit their bid for something maybe comparable and less money, and if we award it then...
Well, because the bid was open, right, you open the bids and read them out, right?
So, okay.
Good with the motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Call it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, see if they'll, see if they'll hold to that one. Okay, uh, sole source, sole source discussion.
I thought we weren't for rejecting it.
Purchase approval, 2018-SS04.
So, this Antevy Pediatric Resuscitation Systems, I think it was Kevin that had talked to you about these a few weeks ago. We did run it in the paper, I put J.R.A.'s the contact, and my knowledge, you didn't get any, weren't contesting it, and so, at this point, looking for approval for that purchase, and that might require further discussion, but just saying that they can purchase from that source. Just Antevy Pediatric Emergency Standards.
Been a few weeks since Kevin was up here, how many Antevy units were we talking about?
One free ambulance. I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but it, it would be one system, free ambulance. It's a state-of-the-art emergency pediatric care. It provides a mechanism to size equipment and dose equipment in a compartmentalized and efficient manner.
So, this would be for 12?
15 right now, maybe 14.
It'd be one free ambulance plus a trainer.
Okay, that's one we're just...
We can do the math. And he, Dr. Antevy himself will fly in and train everybody as part of the purchase price.
What's the price on them? At 18, 85287 right now there, which was up about 7,000 per bag.
You know, I'd, I'd have to get back with you, I think the plan was to buy the system and stock it ourselves with our equipment and supplies that we have bid, we've already bid this year, that we've bid every year, that would, that would save us some money. So, we're basically just buying the system, which is the, the, the bags that the, uh, the equipment is carried in, and the individual compartments in it, and some of the miscellaneous stuff. For example, IV needles, we don't need to buy IV needles from him, we have inventory of IV needles.
Okay, I had 12 for the ambulances, three for the SUVs, and then you want one more for training, so 16?
We'd, we'd use one out of the SUVs for training.
Okay, I thought you were saying you wanted to keep one, not for anything else besides training, so 12 ambulances, 3 SUV.
I'll be honest with you, I think, I think, um, buying eleven for the ambulances, three for the SUVs would work, eleven, three, and one for training would be ideal, but I would take fourteen instead of fifteen. We don't need one for the transit. If we have to press the transit in a service on, in a nine-one-one situation, we could move it around. But the transit was built, spec'd, and delivered as a BLS unit, so.
Why did I have fifteen at that eighteen thousand eight fifty-two?
We had fifteen at the eighteen in the budget, or that's what we talked about the last time?
That's what we talked about the last time.
Okay, that's kinda matches what I had in my notes, and then maybe fourteen of them. I don't know, we just don't have that many ambulances in circulation all the time, and I know you don't wanna be transferring over, but on a specialty unit like this, how hard is that to maybe pull from an ambulance that you have to have serviced and put in a?
It's, it's just gonna get missed at some times, it's just that, it's a, it's one thing to have to remember in the middle of shifting ambulances around, whether you're taking them out of service, doing PMs, or whatever, it's just the, the, the system in place is to have, that's why we have the number of heart monitors we have and, and all that stuff, is every ambulance needs to be outfitted identically.
I think we, we only have eleven, um, lift cots or, uh, Fernco power cots, right? So we, we move those around a little bit?
I'm fine with eleven, I'm fine with eleven kids, and then we can take one from the SUV to train if you wanna drop it to fourteen.
'Cause I mean, I just thought that we were talking about possibly taking one ambulance out of service.
That would take us to eleven.
Right.
So we could do ten and three, 'cause we don't need one for the, uh...
For the transit?
Transit.
Yeah, sorry, screw it like that. I wouldn't oversimplify it, but I've got one table saw that I'll move from truck to truck if I need to, and it, you know, it's one of the more expensive pieces of equipment.
Table saws and dying babies, with all due respect, are two different things. And pediatric emergencies are?
You gotta be pretty cautious with both of them, 'cause I can cough a finger with a table saw.
Pediatric emergencies are highly shared situations.
But it's not that we don't have the equipment.
If we do ten and three, Jerry?
What's that?
If we do ten and three, since we're not putting one in the transit?
Ten and three. Yes, that would work.
Where's that, put us on our capital request then?
We'd be, we'd be under, yeah.
You have a unit price on those, or?
I think you have to get those for us, because they're gonna?
I think Kevin brought all of that before, I, I probably have it, I have it at work, but I don't have it with me.
About one thousand two hundred and six, sixty dollars.
Twelve sixty apiece, roughly. You good with the ten and three, Jeff, or?
Yeah, I think we'll compromise on how, war, war me down, Jerry.
Mark the calendar.
He was trying to get you down to four or five, probably.
Oh, it's all those bids we had earlier. All right.
All right, so.
It was all that mosquito spray, and there you go.
All right, turn ten and three then, and?
Okay, thank you.
We're flying.
Okay, so do we need a motion here, Jen, or?
Yeah, if you can approve the sole source and the purchase of thirteen.
So is that, is that two different ones, do we need to approve the sole source purchase, or?
Yeah, that'd be fine, I think, just a sole source purchase of thirteen each.
I move that we approve the sole source purchase for Hantevi Pediatric Resuscitation System.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do, Jen, then we might skip around, since we've got some of our, uh, bid renewal discussions approvals, twenty-seventeen dash fourteen R one inmate welfare products.
We bid this out last year, and, um, at the time, Bob Barker Company was the lowest, determined to be the lowest investment. They're not proposing any increase for this year, so we're looking to renew that agreement for one year.
Is this the first year of the renewal?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
I move that we renew with, uh, Bob, Bob Barker and Associates? Bar, Bar, uh, Bob Barker Company.
Let's make a deal.
Tongue-tied.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're moving.
He's moving.
Now we're moving.
Got me confused too.
Twenty-seventeen dash twenty R I, let's make a deal.
The Sheriff's Department, GT Distributors, got that bid?
Have your pet spater neutered.
We're diverging up here, so.
Say that again. Jeff's got me.
You started, it's a wrong show.
Gonna make a deal, and Bob Barker going on up there anyway.
Okay, so GT Distributors was determined to be?
Go Happy Gilmore on your minute.
GT Distributors.
They had a lowest last year, when we bid this, they proposed a three percent increase. So, we ask that you renew this agreement with them.
Okay. That's good?
Yeah.
I'm good. I'm hot.
I move that we renew the Sheriff's Department duty gear with GT Distributors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do we wanna shift around a little bit and, and do the Ameren?
I do wanna ask you one thing, um, I guess the Clear Basin, you guys had agreed on a contract, or is the contract ready to be signed?
Yeah.
Jill, do you know?
Oh.
I sent everybody an email about it, and we changed the one paragraph about the previous agreement. I mean, there's stuff in there that I don't like at all, but after talking to Larry, I think the likelihood of that most provisions causing a problem got pretty low.
Can I bring this up in old business?
Old business.
Oh, we don't have old on here.
Unfinished.
Unfinished?
That's where we're at.
Okay, all right, well. I was looking for old business too, I was like, we don't even have old business on.
I'm here.
It's unfinished.
I'm here, yeah.
So we're gonna approve just the, the statement of work?
No, there's two things here in the contract, and the statement of work.
So we need to approve the statement of work and the agreement, master services agreement?
Yes.
Software subscription and master services agreement? Okay.
I'm fine with they went back and forth on it, I think.
Yeah, I am too. And this is with Clear Basin, is that correct? This was Clear Basin? All right, I move that we approve and sign the statement of work between Coal County and Clear Basin Software.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think we said around ten o'clock, we were gonna talk about the?
Yeah, let me finish this here. I move that we approve and sign the software subscription agreement between Clear Basin Software LLC and Coal County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's ten o'clock.
Did you hear that? The bells are right on time.
Maybe you heard it.
We can do accounts payable on this, what do you got on this change order? None? Okay. What about that asphalt overlay change order?
I'll be right now, real quick.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Heard that real quick.
And we'll get you out of here.
This is the final closeout, I've seen it, asphalt overlay program last year. The final amount, one million seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand and thirty-three dollars twenty-nine cents. And, um, the, uh, the totals actually came in for the county part of it, under the contract amount, but the, the four communities, the, other than Taos, which was a little bit under, the other three, uh, they had some over, just due to adding some items. And then Boursville added a road, they weren't originally going to do this year, they changed that also. That's really the, the bulk of the initial cost, the rest of it was just, uh, just formal fees.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
You guys got any questions?
No.
I move that we approve the two thousand seventeen asphalt overlay program change order number one, final closeout.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve accounts payable pending review. Way ahead of you. There's some utilities.
Do we have any reimbursements on there?
Okay, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
We're doing, boss?
Well, do you wanna do the order authorizing extension of the maturity date to increase? We'll get that, 'cause Jerry's gonna take a while, I know, so I think we'll try to... I think we'll try to do the?
The NID?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just what Sam said, this was an order to extend that Tony Stedman came up with for the financing of the Randall Drive. We just need to prove what's signed.
Questions?
No.
Good with this? I move that we approve an order authorizing an extension of the maturity date and increase in interest rate of the county's limited general obligation, temporary note, Randall Drive Neighborhood Improvement District Project Series two thousand sixteen with Mid-America Bank, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're almost done.
Yeah.
Are we going to close session now, or? I thought you said something about, talking about something?
Well, we've got the Ameren litigation discussion in open session.
Okay.
But we can do closed session first and come back.
What was, what were we gonna talk about in open session? If there's litigation going on, wouldn't we talk about that in closed session?
We're gonna have to vote in open session.
Well, but we, we need to have discussions before we?
Yeah.
Vote, so, I mean, I would say we'd talk about certain things in closed session, and then we may have something back in open.
Yeah, I'm not gonna talk about it in open session, it's gonna be still litigation.
I move we go into closed session pursuant to section six-ten point oh-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions sub-one and personnel issues sub-three.
Second.
Roll call first.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll do the legal.
I'd do the Ameren thing first, and then the other visitors can sign it.
We might have something today, so. I can, I can send you something if, when we come out?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
No, I got that on there too, but I think. Okay, we'll go back into open session.
Tell me when you're ready.
You're up? We're up.
You sure you don't want some of those Snickers, Chris? I mean, you see them on?
Oh, I thought you were gonna ask me if I wanted something else.
I do that after.
Angry.
It is afternoon, so.
Hard day.
I wasn't angry, I just made sure I didn't get them.
Yep.
You don't wanna make decisions on empty stomach.
Okay, all right.
Oh, yep.
Paramedic recruiting.
So, um, a little, first of all, the short story is, we knew going in, we were going to, when we eliminated the twenty-four hour shifts, we were gonna have more need, a greater need for paramedics, so it took more bodies to fill those shifts. Due to some resignations, we had a couple openings, Kevin and I have explored every single option that we know to not expend any money, and we're just not getting anywhere, we're not, we're not even getting an application. So Jared Mullins, who does all the recruiting for Paramedics Plus nationally, has a business on the side, where he helps people gain applicants, he doesn't interview them or screen them or anything, he points them in the direction. He's got eight hundred and some contacts for colleges, he's got eleven thousand other connections for other means, and, and honestly, for two thousand dollars, we spent that in overtime filling these shifts last week. So, I'm still trying to fill them all with part timers, but at some point, I gotta, I gotta cut it and say, we gotta fill this shift and take it with overtime. So, I, I would recommend, uh, one of two things or both. One is sign this agreement with him for two thousand dollars. It, it, we'll find out once and for all if we're going to make, uh, make any headway in this. Second is, um, in the EMS world, it's been highly successful to pay bonus dividends, not to the employee who's coming in, but offered to current employees who can recruit a paramedic to come in. So if you're thinking about that, what I would suggest is a two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollar bonus to an existing employee recruits a paramedic that's not payable until they complete orientation or probation, so that's six months, they get half, and at the end of the year, they get the other half. So, we could do that for one employee, or one, the first one who's able to recruit somebody who gets hired, we could offer that, so we know how much is at risk. But we have got to do something to get our staffing adequate, because like I said, right now, we're, we're down three of, three of eight positions at night. The next person leaves, we're down half our slots on the night shift.
Educate me, okay, you're an EMT, how, how much more training is it to become a paramedic?
About eighteen months.
Okay.
About eighteen months. See, that was part of, I, I, I suggested as part of the budget process that we, we offer paramedic scholarships, um, and, and that's been a good way, for me personally, in my experience, to grow your own, um, because they already work here, they already know the system, and you send them to school, and you support them at school with time off, their time's still on their own. But that's what, what I've done, and been very successful in the past, but that didn't make it past the, the budget cut, so, um, and it's not inexpensive, it's eight, ten thousand for class.
Where would they, where would they go to school?
Columbia. So I just think we, we have to, we've, we've been doing this long enough to know that renewing these free ads aren't gonna get us anywhere. And to put Jared Mullins' proposal in perspective, at two thousand bucks, it's roughly five hundred a month for Indeed, Monster, there's some EMS-specific websites, they're all four or five hundred dollars a month. So, if we can get this reach with him, I think that's a reasonable starting point, because we haven't got the reach with those others with the free ads. So that's why I'm, I'm leaning against that, and it's not, he, he makes it very well-known, it's not with Paramedics Plus, it's his own company, he's got his own name, he's got his own W, whatever it is, nine? Yeah, W nine, so it's him doing it in and of itself, in and of itself.
I'm good with starting there.
Mm-hmm.
Don't really, wish we didn't have to do it, but I mean, we're, we're exhausted all of the resources, so.
Yeah, I, I've, I don't know anything else we can do specifically, in fact, uh, Kevin was working with Indeed, Indeed told us, you've done this enough, you need to start paying now, we're not gonna put these free ones up anymore, so.
How long is the contract, with the loan?
Four months, four months, five hundred a month, um, and, you know, if, uh...
Let's see where it gets us, and if you don't get any leads?
I think it's a step in the right direction, I really do. It's just, A, we needed an agreement, and B, I didn't necessarily have it in the budget per se, I'm not gonna put a contingency up or anything. We'll find a line item somewhere that's got that money and pull it, but, but it may short that line eventually, and we'll see.
Yeah, we're talking about a budget time, I wasn't for it, I wanted to keep trying to see what we could accomplish, and then, you know, sometimes I don't mind a state of insanity, but that's, that's definitely, definitely insanity to keep doing the same thing we've been doing over and over, so.
Kevin, Kevin did tell me that he got a lot of phone calls, but?
I'm fine with it. Uh, I guess we just gotta figure out where we're gonna take out the budget.
Professional services?
Works for me.
We need to make money we can, but? We need to make money we can, but that's...
Do we need to vote on that, or...
Huh?
Do we need to vote on that? No?
No, you may need to sign a transfer.
Just don't yell at me, just don't yell at me in six months when professional services are on short.
I mean, I just need to have documented that, we said to go ahead and go with it, then he's got that.
Jill has seen this, it's basically a...
Contract.
It's not really a contract, it's a little two-pager.
Just an agreement?
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's it.
So then we'll have some kind of an agreement, or some kind of a vote then to enter into the services.
You need to vote to sign.
So, there you go.
I move that we sign the agreement with Jared Mullins for recruiting at EMS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Yep, thank you. Anything else?
Recession to my office.
Anything else, Jeff?
Steve.
No?
No.
Brain dead?
Yes.
Maybe we stand in recess till four-thirty?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to think that we had recess now.
Do we go out to recess?
Yep, yep.
I just need, I don't need you, obviously, you're just, I just need a scan copy.
I'll scan this email to you, right?
Are you done? You guys sitting here for a few more hours?
No.
No. Thursday, April eighth, four-thirty.
Thursday, April the eighth, at four-thirty.
March eighth, March eighth.